And if you'll please join us for our pledges in the prayer.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag of the divisions to the meeting Texas, one state and your God, one indivisible.
If you'll please join me in our prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for the ability and the honor to be able to meet tonight and do the work of the City of Levelland. We just pray, Lord, that you would give us wisdom and clear forethought to be able to do it well and to do it according to your will, Lord. We want our city to prosper and be the best that it can be. We just pray, Lord, as it's going to be extremely cold, that our citizens will be warm and protected. Lord, we just pray that your hand of protection and favor is over our city and our first responders and our citizens. In your name we pray, amen. Do have one statement of citizens and Sir Todd Paxton signed up to speak. Thanks for coming tonight, Todd. Three minutes, name and address, please.
Todd Paxton, six oh six Poplar Street. Thank you for coming up here. As most of you know, with Paxton Real Estate and been servicing the community. I'll just plug myself fifty years next year. So anyway, we've been doing a long time. I came to speak to you concerning item number four on your agenda, concerning the housing resolution that you're going to be requested to execute. I just wanted to make comment to you, this is for affordable renting housing. I do represent actually the seller in this transaction, just so you, you know, fair transparent disclosure on it. But it is contingent on DeMaris Development to receive the application approved by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And the credits that go along with it for this type of unit. Now I just want to make mention, this is not what sometimes people call low income housing, it's income restricted. It's geared toward the medium income of the families in of Hockley County and of Levelland. So it's, it is that type of housing available. You'll have some, I think you'll have some slides and pictures of the proposed development, which looks very attractive. And I just want to encourage you, we have a need for housing. I know that Jamie knows this and Michael, et cetera, that we work in it regularly. And that can run the gamut of from big houses all the way down to manufactured homes. And while we always have sometimes preferences that we really need this and we really need that. Right now we have available to us right here with this potential development to attack one element of the needs in our market. And because our apartments are basically full, there's waiting lists. When you do deal with income assisted type or lower income housing deals, they've got waiting lists. And so having a new development that would address those rental needs is very important. So I'm just coming today to, tonight to y'all to say, I encourage y'all to please support and approve this resolution. So that we can move this on to the state and potentially get this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. With no more statements by citizens, we'll move on to our first agenda item to consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of the January twentieth, twenty twenty five special meeting and the February third, twenty twenty five regular meeting.
Mayor, I know that we approved the minutes of the January twentieth, twenty twenty five and a special meeting in February third, twenty twenty five regular meeting.
Second, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed with that, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider all matters incident and related to the issuance and sale of City of Levelland, Texas. Paxton Water Works and Sewer System Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series twenty twenty five, including the adoption of ordinance ten eighty nine authorizing the issuance of such certificates of obligation.
Mayor, members of council. This item before you tonight, as you read in the agenda item, is for the certificates of obligation series twenty twenty five. For us to replace all of our water meters within town. Before we get into that. These exercises, when cities look at doing bonds or certificates of obligations. It is a, a good exercise in that our finances are examined from top to bottom. There's a lot of work put on staff. Cynthia and Joe did a phenomenal job of answering the numerous questions that come from standard and pores. Come from every group that's out there, from underwriters to bond people to just the gamut regarding the city's finances. And as y'all well know. We've struggled, we had an opening in finance for a long time. Cynthia was brand new in, into the director of finance role, brand new to public finance. And but she hit the ground running and she's been running ever since and she's done a phenomenal job. And, and Joe has also assisted her through that. But traditionally, whenever you kind of have some stumbles like that, you get frowned upon. But through their excellent due diligence, through their excellent of digging and getting the answers. That standard and pores and other wanting. When they did the analysis on our city and did, and we're looking at affirming our rating, we maintained our rating. We did not go down, we stayed at an A plus, which speaks volumes. Because traditionally, when you have audits that are late, when you've had a change in financial leadership, they kind of ding you a little. But they didn't, and I owe those efforts to Joe, to Cynthia, and to just many others that work behind the scenes to do this. So it makes it easier to present this item that we're, we're solid credit wise, we're solid financial wise. That we're, we're moving in the right direction, we're doing the right things. So this project before y'all, as we've been discussing since last October, is to replace all of the water meters in town. We are already in the process of getting all the stuff in, getting the wireless stuff, work's already beginning in this. Sometime next week, the first mailer will be going out on this that says, hey, the city. Has contracted with Ameresco and another company to come in and start replacing the meters. And then at the end of March, there will be another mailer that goes out. So this project is going to be financed by savings. And also I hate to use the word new revenue. But if you'll recall last October, when we did the survey of about sixty five, seventy meters. It showed that the test sample was reading in the eighty five to eighty six percentile. And the American Public Water Association and other groups like that. Expect water meters to be reading in the ninety seven percentile. So there's a potential that we were losing revenue from, from that sample. Hopefully with that regained revenue. We will, we'll utilize that revenue to pay back this bond instrument that we're doing. So I think that. It's a great project for community, it allows the city to better manage our water system. It will also give a voice to the consumers for them to better manage their deal. We're looking at a couple of different apps that gives them even more control on, on how they manage this. So tonight, in, in looking at this, and before I turn it over to Robert Spears with Hilltop Securities, I will tell you about our, our bond sale today, which was phenomenal as well. I'm just going to read the caption of ordinance ten eighty nine that y'all will be considering tonight. And it's an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Levelland, Texas. Tax and Water Works and Sewer System Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series twenty twenty five. Specifying the terms and features of said certificates. Providing for the payment of said certificates of obligation by the levy of an ad valorem tax upon all taxable property within the city. And a limited pledge of the net revenues from the operation of the city's water works and sewer system. Resolving other matters incident and related to the issuance, payment, security, sale and delivery of said certificates. Including the approval and execution of paying agent registrar agreement. And the approval and distribution of an official statement providing an effective date. The entire ordinance is eighty one pages. If we want to camp out here until sometime Thursday, we could read all eighty one. But this caption covers it also under statute. This sale, this ordinance provides for one reading, we do not have to do two readings. Now I know within this, you heard that this is supported by ad valorem taxes. And that is an instrument that if the revenue doesn't provide the necessary funds. And we don't have other options, then we can exercise ad valorem debt taxes, debt rate to support this bond. Questions? Mr. Spears, you want to add anything on the sale of today or anything to give them the good news on that part?
I'll say a few minor things, you did a great job explaining it, especially with the, that's some key stuff. Hit nail on the head there. Like you said, anytime there's a late audit, you usually get dinged. So obviously there was a lot of good work on the backend here to affirm that rating. Just wanted to give a high level, high level overview here. Back on December sixteenth, council adopted a notice of intent to issue these. The max par amount, I believe, forgot to bring my notes up here, was five million nine hundred seventy five thousand, I believe. And the final part today came in at about five point two million, so we're way under that max par. I believe we were estimating average annual debt service at five hundred, five hundred thirty K. And the final pricing numbers came out at five thirteen K. So pretty good reduction there from what we were estimating back in December. We were estimating the interest rate at four point two five and the final interest rate today came in at three point nine nine percent. So. All in all, I think it was phenomenal sale, you know. Everything went well and I'm happy to answer any further questions.
Any questions on this side, don't we? I'd like to thank Cynthia and Joe as well for that A plus credit rating, the citizens of Levelland, thank you, because that helps in our interest rate. It helps in, in the, in the whole circle of this and it gets this cheaper for everyone. For years to come.
Mayor of council is inclined to present a motion to adopt ordinance number one zero eight nine. The adoption of this ordinance and also authorizing the mayor and or city manager to execute any other necessary documents. Because, Mary, you haven't been through this party, but there's at least six inches worth of paperwork that will require your signature, so.
Any more questions or discussion on this matter?
Mayor, I move the adoption of ordinance ten eighty nine authorizing the issuance of such, also of obligations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Okay.
Certificate of obligation, any opposed? With that, the motion carries and we do not need to read this, correct? The caption checks that box, I mean, if we're not reading the eighty one pages, we're.
That's my understanding, but I, I have it.
All of them are happy. Yeah, yeah.
I have it here, if, so.
If anyone wants to check that out.
Our city secretary would love the opportunity to read this.
We'll move on to item number three, to consider and take necessary action on a payment request from Ameresco in the amount of one million, seven hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty six cents. For the water meter project pursuant, the contract approved between the city and Ameresco in October of twenty twenty.
Mayor, members of council, this item is very similar to earlier this year where we authorized payment for approximately three hundred thousand dollars. This one point seven million dollars is a second payment towards this project within the, the ordinance that we just adopted. It allows for a reimbursement provision that whatever dollars we have spent towards this project. That we can pay it back once we've received the bond funds. Bond funds will come late March, early April at the latest. Cynthia has prepared our monthly investment report for January twenty twenty five. This is where we would pull the funds from somewhere in these accounts, or we may pull it from one or two accounts in order to cover this. We have also talked to staff and asked them to be very mindful of their expenses until we get this money placed back in there. So Cynthia, you got anything you want to add to this, ma'am?
No, any question? Thanks for providing this again, I know we've been presented with that again, but it absolutely gives more reassurance that we're going to be fine. Any questions for Cynthia? Everyone understands the repayment that we're just waiting on that reimbursement for thirty to forty five days and there's plenty of funds there to cover this approval to Ameresco.
I know that we approved the payment application number two from Ameresco in the amount of one million, seven hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and sixty six.
Second, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed with that, the motion carries, we'll move on to item number five. Oh, sorry, skip, not trying to skip number four, very important. Considering take necessary action to approve a resolution twenty twenty five oh two, supporting the development of affordable rental housing for DeMaris Development LLC. In its application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for housing tax credits and reduce, for reducing related city administrative fees.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from discussion and voting on this since the broker that I work for is actually representing this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scher.
Mayor, members of council, this item before you, the applicant is actually here. And I'm sure he wants to address y'all and answer any questions or present his project as well. This is not necessarily formality, but it is a first step in a process. The company has chosen Levelland to, to build a product within our corporate limits. It's behind the Hockley County credit unions between that and the golf course to build some housing. As Mr. Paxton explained earlier, it's not necessarily affordable housing, but it, it's fitting a niche that our community needs. Because I've always been one, affordable housing is a very difficult term to define. Because depending on where you're at in that spectrum, depends on which number we're, they're at. But he has come before the city asking us to approve a resolution that supports this project. It also allows him to take this resolution, file it with an application with the state, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. Which will allow him to have some tax credits that will allow this project to move forward. If all of this goes well and he gets approval and everything still works out the way that he hopes. I think he has shared with us that he is looking at breaking ground winter of twenty six. So it's still a ways off, but there's also a lot of work to do. There's, once he gets approval from the state, if he's still going forward, we still have site plans, we still have a lot of different things. There's also, as any of y'all familiar with this, there is a floodplain issue, but his site plan looks like that he's kind of worked out of that area, so that's not a problem. He's also created, I believe about a three hundred foot buffer around the pump jacks that are in that property as well. So he's done some great work initially and. I'll turn it over to him and let him address y'all and y'all can ask any questions that y'all may have regarding this project if he so chooses.
Hello, thank you for coming in tonight for this.
Yeah, happy to, happy to be here, thanks for considering the request. I think Mr. Fisher summarized the, the proposal pretty well, I'll give you guys a quick overview, maybe like a little bit of who I am, but really I'm here to answer questions. I, I think you guys have seen at least a little bit, enough, enough to know, but what, what it is you're voting on. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm Nathan Joseph, owner of DeMaris Companies, we're out of Atlanta. We do affordable housing development, really nationwide, we have projects under construction in. Illinois, Oklahoma, North Dakota, don't have anything currently under construction right now. My, my business partner and I have done work in Texas before, more over towards San Antonio area, Kennedy. Sure, it's that, that kind of area. We are, we intend to apply to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for tax credits that we will. If we're fortunate to receive them, sell to investors, take those, take that money that we sold to investors and use it to develop what's proposed as fifty three units of housing. Half of those units are two proposed or two bedrooms, half of them are three bedrooms. We're discussing the, the income and rent restrictions, the. Without getting too deep into the weeds. Generally residents earn about fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars a year, households being about that much. Two bedroom rents will be somewhere around nine hundred and three bedrooms will be somewhere around twelve hundred. When I say rents, I mean, that is a total tenant payment. So that includes rent and all utilities.
Wow.
I'm not sure if you've seen pictures of what we do, but they're townhomes. Anywhere from sixty percent to a hundred percent brick. And we'll have a community room onsite, if we have an onsite manager, playground, all, all that good stuff.
Tell us a little bit more about your plans for the community group, community rooms.
Plans for the community room, it, it'd be a leasing, primarily, primarily leasing office, space for residents to, you know, congregate and all that stuff. We intend to have some space in the community room for tutoring and for the students that are living in the development. And intend to engage a tutor, tutoring service, some kind of after school program to be available to those students.
That's a huge need in our community as well.
I think, I think most communities, yeah. Yeah, it's not something that we, we're often able to do. And I'm, I'm actually pretty stoked that we can do it here.
Pretty stoked too.
Yeah, yeah, I'm excited.
The renderings are, are exciting to me to see all the, all the green space. I love the thought of landscaping all of that and making that really nice, all the ins and the outs. And I sure hope you go through with that in your, in your construction phase, if, if all this works out. Are, in the plans, there are, it's not unique to Levelland, but there are two pump jacks in here. And you of course have areas around there and buffers and Levelland's not scared of the pump jacks and I hope y'all aren't either. But I do hope that you would please make them pretty. That sounds silly, but there's, there's lots of times in our, in our town and spots where we could show you where people have capitalized on it. They've made it our school colors and the fencing and, and they've been done well and it's visually appealing and, and it kind of fits with our, with our theme. And I hope, hope maybe some of that could be combined in there, that would be exciting.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that, we, that was a question, when we first met with the city, hey, we're not afraid of these, should we be? And we've been, and we've been talking about, hey, what do we do to?
Of course, they'll have to be roads to get to them where, you know.
Yeah. I like that idea.
Keep going work on them. I was excited to see that they were two and three bedroom units, more family units than just single occupants. And I was excited to see the amount of brick that was on there. Like you mentioned, I thought that that was a, a huge positive for, and, and parking right on site on the units. It's a unique piece of land.
Yeah.
So, do you see the, the drainage being any kind of an issue for you? And because you will obtain the portion of land where the, where the drainage, the lower piece of property as well, is that correct?
Yes, we, we, we will acquire that piece. Civil engineers with, took an initial look, they didn't have any concerns about it. We are getting a call, a full feasibility report from those civil engineers, it's under, it's underway and processed. But they have not said, hey, we think that this is a concern. Flood plain, also not an issue, we're just, we're just avoiding it altogether, not going to develop in it, but we'll obviously own that, own it. We're not building in it, we're, we're in the clear.
And now over the years. There's been some illegal dumping in there over the years, not a lot, but you know, things like that happen from time to time. So that could come up in the future as well, hopefully not, but.
We, we did get a phase one environmental assessment done. Those folks came out on site, checked everything, did not, did not note any concerns about some of the dumping that happened. I have in other states and other developments had. Significant issues with, with stuff that was dumped on site, but I do not anticipate that that'll be an issue here, hope not.
And just for transparency for the public, it, it lists on here in reducing related city administrative fees. And please, James, help me on this, this is just asking for some small permitting fees that the city would, would let go, correct? We're talking like two hundred fifty dollars.
Yes, ma'am, it, it shows the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs that we're supportive of this and we're willing to have a small vested interest in this as well and just help them move this project forward.
Now just thank you for looking at Levelland, we're a great place.
I, I've, I've been here a couple of minutes and, and I really, really enjoy, I really enjoy it. And we've been working with Mr. Paxton and I've enjoyed that too, so.
We'd like for you to stay as long as you can.
Yeah.
Wendy's opened yesterday. Yeah.
What opened?
Wendy's, they opened yesterday. They're great, I had them today.
And Justin says, wait, on Saturdays. Chick-fil-A comes over, the little Chick-fil-A truck comes over, or is that secret? Is that not happening yet?
We're here, but I don't know what their, I don't know their schedule, they just. They don't contribute to our local tax base, I'm a little salty there.
Okay.
We need it and we need it. Uh Chick-fil-A here.
Maybe get fifty three more housing units and you have enough population for Chick-fil-A to be on the radar.
So when you develop in other communities, do you bring employees or will these be jobs available to Loveland locals? I mean, I think you should have a senior agent or a property manager. I did property management for ten years. I don't want a job, but maybe when you open in two years.
The the pro- the the individ- yes, the property management staff will almost certainly be be local. I say almost certainly because I don't know what's gonna happen, but it is, I I cannot think of a single instance where the property management staff is not local.
Obviously, I know a property that's small is not gonna have fifty job availabilities for our town, but I was just curious about that, too.
Seven, over fifty?
Fifty, fifty seven.
Fifty three.
Uh fifty fifty three, yeah. Yeah, so.
Well, we would just, I may never get to speak to you again, so if you get to build this, we're thankful for your investment.
I hope you do get a chance. I hope I hope we will get to build it and we'll get we'll get a chance to talk more.
Be great.
Any more questions for Mr. Joseph?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in for this. Appreciate.
How do we move?
Do we have a do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash O two, supporting the development of affordable rental housing by Domaire Development LLC and its application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for housing tax credits and reducing related city administrative fees.
Megan.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed with that motion carries? Thank you, Mr. Joseph. Yes, we're very excited for you. Move on to item number five, to consider and take necessary action to award bids for the following: inspection truck, cemetery truck, street department truck, water department truck, a rear loader for the a rear loader for the sanitation department.
Mayor, members of council, the the city uh issued proposals for city work truck or city work trucks. We received excellent bids from throughout the area. It was very nice to have uh very strong bids that were also very uh competitive. And uh our recommendation tonight, I've got one correction on my recommendation because I I redid my math and realized my pencil wasn't working correctly. But what staff is recommending tonight, and we're gonna handle the trucks before we move to the rear loader, is that the um city award uh the bid for the instruction truck to the Loveland Chamber for a twenty Loveland Chevrolet, boy, I can't read either. Uh Loveland Chevrolet for a twenty twenty five Chevrolet fifteen hundred WT four by four extended cab. The bid is forty two thousand nine hundred and forty seven dollars, a trade in value of eighty five hundred with a balance of thirty four 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 seven. For the cemetery, uh the bid be awarded to Loveland Chevrolet for a twenty twenty five Chevrolet fifteen hundred WT four by four extended cab. The bid is forty two thousand nine forty seven. In the street department, this is the correction, that the bid be awarded to Brownfield Ford for a twenty twenty five F one fifty XL. Um let me get to my notes on that one. Uh the bid for Brownfield Ford is forty two four ninety one with a trade in value of fourteen thousand three hundred, which brings the base bid down to twenty eight thousand one ninety one. And then for the water department, the bid be awarded to Loveland Chevrolet for a twenty twenty five twenty five hundred WT two wheel drive extended cab, the bid of forty three thousand two hundred ninety two dollars for trade in value of sixteen thousand three hundred. Uh there's a service bid that would be added to this at ten thousand nine ninety five, leaving a balance of thirty seven thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars. Staff is making these recommendations for these items.
The one in Brownfield, that one just was beyond that percentage that we could be.
Yes, our local bidder preference, it was outside of that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor, ma'am.
Ma'am.
Um, Mr. Fisher, I do think that um at least one of these, we need to make some certain specific findings.
Yes, ma'am.
Um so I'm not sure, they're supposed to be in writing, so I don't know if we want to follow up with the written resolution.
Thanks.
Um so uh for at least one of these, we're utilizing the local bidder preference.
Yes.
Under two seventy one point nine oh five. So we'll need to make some findings that the local bidder offers the local government the best combination of contract price and additional economic development opportunities for the local government created by the contract award. Um including the employment of residents of the local government and increased tax revenues for the local government. So just to summarize, that'll be best combination of contract price and additional economic development opportunities. The contract price plus economic development.
Did you say we'll need a resolution for that?
You might want to follow up with one.
Would we follow up that at a subsequent meeting?
Um I think so.
But we can move forward tonight with no reason to have to table this. We can move forward tonight or?
Um I think so.
Okay.
Are are we planning to like go buy these tomorrow?
Yes.
I would say if council authorizes it, we'll be moving forward with this. Do you want to wait till March third? Is that what you're telling me or?
Um, well, I think if we at least for now make the findings on the record.
Yeah, we can do that.
It can be okay, but we will need to follow up in writing.
Okay. Everyone agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Any discussion on the purchase of these four trucks? No? Okay. We have, do we have a motion or four different, however we want to phrase it?
Madam Mayor, after reviewing the bids and receiving uh that we received for the trucks, uh I move that we accept uh Loveland Chevrolet bid for the inspection truck uh with the balance of the thirty four four forty seven, the cemetery truck for forty two nine uh forty seven, and the water truck with the balance of the thirty seven nine eighty seven. Uh award those two Loveland Chevrolet. Uh they had the best combination of contract price plus economic development, and we should follow that up with a resolution. Uh and then the streets uh truck to Brownfield Ford in the amount of the ending balance with twenty nine six ninety two, or I'm sorry, uh twenty eight thousand one ninety one. Did you get all of that?
I did.
Thank you.
Great job. You have a second?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed with that motion carry? Next, we'll move on to five E to consider and take necessary action to award a bid for a rear loader for the sanitation department.
You want to talk about your garbage truck?
On that note, you get to come up here and talk trash.
So keep your mouth shut. Joe, this is dramatically under budget. You should be so excited.
I'll pass now.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, today I'm gonna talk to you about the sanitation rear loader truck. Uh it's as Mayor mentioned, it is uh under budget. Um we had budgeted in the capital financing fund four hundred thousand dollars for this uh particular truck. Uh this particular truck is a is a rear loader that's a it's a key piece of equipment that cleans up our alleys, um removing bulky items and green waste set beside those dumpsters, so. Staff requested some purchasing cooperative quotes and we received one from Robert Robert Truck Center out of Lubbock, Texas. This was kind of a tricky quote for them. Uh they had to actually do a source well quote from for their truck and then a byboard quote for the actual compactor. So it, the quote included a twenty twenty six international truck, six by four chassis for a hundred and sixteen thousand nine thirteen forty three and the pack more twenty five yard compactor body with handling fee uh a hundred and twenty one thousand seven sixty, which is unusual that the body's more than the actual truck. And then the additional freight floor pans and fees was for seven eight hundred, which brought the total price to two hundred and forty six thousand four seventy four and nine cents.
That is way under.
It is.
Did we get trade in on that?
Yes, uh we actually looked in for a trade in and the trade in amount it was wholesale value, um but it's coming in at fifty five hundred dollars. So for our trade in, yes. And our truck is a two thousand nine international, kind of is exactly kind of the same, but it's just this one's a newer model, of course. But the two thousand nine and uh it's got about around eighty thousand miles on that truck.
Do you think we could get more for it if we tried to? We're doing.
That's a good, that's a it's a good question, so.
Staff is wrestling with that, if we keep it or not, but we just uh wanted to make you aware of that, Joe. Tell me late morning, we were like.
Pennies.
Yeah, I don't think like any trading in. If there's a chance we could use it or get more.
We originally budgeted four hundred thousand.
We're so far under that.
Forty six, but they're only offering to give us fifty five hundred for our current truck of this nature. So both staffs wrestling with what, do we take that or do we keep it as a backup or try to sell it online or?
Auction or something.
Is it good for backup? That's something that we have to use every day, all day long. If we were down for a week, it haven't had one repaired, would it be the end of the world?
You're gonna force me to say this.
Okay, go ahead.
May twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four.
Gotcha, but.
We're all still having BTS meetings.
Into our budget is fifty five grand again. I think it's something we certainly need to to weigh those options, but I don't have a problem.
Yeah, for sure. We'll explore those options.
Side note, real quick, it has nothing to do with this other than the guys that operate that truck. About two weeks ago, my wife had my grandson at the at the park over by uh Country Club Park. Uh those guys were going down the alley picking up trash. They saw my grandson, a two and a half year old, was just having a fit looking at him. They stopped and they waved at him and they made his day. So I love that our employees take the time to a little guy that he just made.
That's awesome.
So I know that that have to do with that, but those those guys are awesome.
For sure.
Great shout out.
Mr. Powell, you had a question?
You said how much? Fifty five hundred?
Fifty five hundred for the trade in, yes.
Oh, fifty five hundred, I think it's fifty five thousand.
Oh, no, I'm on, yeah, fifty five thousand. People like what? Yeah.
Fifty five thousand dollars.
I missed it, fifty five thousand, fifty five thousand.
That's more in line with some of the auctions and stuff that are going out.
Your opinion, is it worth retaining that for backup? Would it work for a backup?
Uh I believe it would work for a backup.
For a term.
Short term, yes. But like I said, the options are there. We could, like I said, this is a wholesale price, so it's not the actual uh Roberts Truck Center that's want, they didn't even want it, but they sent a wholesaler to go out here and take a price on it, so.
To value it.
For sure.
We should take, we should keep it. Even one of the the area communities that can't afford a big truck.
Yes, we.
And I mean that, maybe for fifty five bucks if they could find.
Contemplated that also.
A lot of areas that need cleaned up. We had the manpower and the extra truck. I'd love to send it down some alleys that need attention to go pick up the mess that somebody just left there or all the other beautiful things that they leave that get left for us. If we have the, I mean, if it just gives us an option. I mean, wholesaling it may be maybe a better choice. I understand that. Options are there. Any more conversation on on this item and the purchase of this sanitation truck?
I move to approve to award a bid for a rear loader truck for the sanitation department to Roberts Truck Center in the amount of two hundred and forty six thousand four hundred and seventy four dollars and nine cents.
Wait a second.
Sir.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed with that and the motion carries?
We're keeping that one, but no one.
As of right now, yes, this does not include the trade in or anything like that. The right now, we're still contemplating what we need to do with it. Yes, sir.
For six is to consider and take necessary action on board appointments for city boards and commissions. And what I would propose is that we go through here and um we we have several people in the audience that have been here several times for these and we'd be respectful of their time and move on with with those boards. And then I believe there's a couple of boards that and we are going to go into executive session to discuss. So if we could um potentially go and make these appointments for the main street board, since we have people in attendance here in front of us and this issue's been tabled before and and any other, what other ones am I missing that we could do right now?
Somebody, are we gonna do that in executive session? She's here for the animal shelter one?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I think those are the only words we have.
We do those two.
Um so if we can leave over to the main street board, Loveland Main Street Program consists of eight board members appointed by the city council. And um they have a spot on that board and they have made a recommendation and the individual has applied and Mr. Albert Garcia has presented himself for that spot on that board.
We know him.
And do we make a motion in second for each one? So right now, we need to say.
Okay, yes. So so we'll need a motion to appoint Mr. Albert Garcia to the main street uh board in a second for that.
I move that we appoint Albert Garcia to the main street for the term.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed with that and the motion carries? And is there anything else we want to do before we go into executive session that I'm?
Do animal shelter.
Animal, do animal, okay.
I'm sure.
The next uh board that we will um look at at this moment is the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. We have a citizen vacancy there. Uh that term will expire in twenty twenty seven. It's a two year term and uh I know we've had two or three people that applied, thankfully. It's great to have interest in that position. And um do we have a recommendation from from the board?
I recommend.
What you think?
Are we going to that?
On the main street board, that was a question is do we?
We're backing up to main street, sorry.
Do we need to also the two that are willing to re-serve, reappoint those as well?
Because it shows their terms expired in twenty twenty four.
Iris, do you want to stay on? No, you don't.
And I'm in my uh uh, well, we've already voted on it, sir.
Do, do another motion. Like a lifetime appointment.
I I would also uh move that we appoint Ms. Iris Keeling uh to the term that will expire in twenty seven and Roxanne Gonzalez that will expire.
She's fulfilling a term.
Iris is lifetime, too.
Yeah. The twenty seven as well. Or lifetime, whichever.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aha.
Sorry, who made the second?
I'm sorry, Mr. Powell. Any opposed with that and the motion carries? And now we will jump back down to the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Do we have a recommendation from council?
Mayor, I recommend that we appoint Liz Farrell to the Animal Services. She's been on committees for us. She's worked great.
Great. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aha.
With any opposed?
Thanks, y'all.
The motion carries. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for your time again for this over and over. Um with that, we're going to move into executive session for for a little while. We are going to do our cumulative executive session for the evening, so we will come out and we will not go back in. Um so uh the city council of the city of Loveland will convene into executive session on the eighteenth day of February twenty twenty five at six forty four P M o'clock, subject matter, executive session deliberations that follow in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation duties discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city manager, in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment valuation, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, municipal city judge.
You're good, Andrea?
Yes.
The City Council of the City of Lebanon has completed a decadent session on the eighteenth day of February twenty twenty five at seven forty three p.m. With that, we will remove item number six, which is our board appointments. The both, the first board that we will appoint members to will just do it in order. We will just, first we'll start with the Centennial Committee possibility. And this is a brand new committee with all of that leveling has going with our centennial celebration that's coming soon that we are so excited about. And it's a brand new committee, but it has so much potential. With that, we are going to appoint informally, this is an informal committee, but we will appoint Barbara Penner, Allison Keeling, Joanna Runcles, Percy Milton, Johnny Garcia, Isaac Diaz, Mr. Michael Stewart, myself, Dane Dubree, Kelly Martin, and Lori Marquez.
You'll just provide me that list?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sure we'll, that's okay, fair. The next formal appointment of a board that we will take action on tonight, the first one is the Lebanon Economic Development Corporation. And there are two individuals that are up for decision on that board, Mr. Elgin Connor and Mr. Sham Myatt.
Mayor, I move that we remove Elgin Connor from his position on the LEDC board and appoint Dallas Pena to finish that term, as well as appoint Dallas Pena and Sham Myatt for another term.
With a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries.
Second with that.
Yes, ma'am. Next, next committee that we will speak on is the Lebanon Community Development Corporation. And Mr. Bruce White has said he would like to roll off of that. And then Mr. Barry Royal, Mr. Ryan Gibbs, and Mr. Bobby Neal would like to continue to serve on that committee.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Dallas Pena, reappoint Barry Royal, Ryan Gibbs, and Bobby Neal to serve those terms for the Lebanon Community Development.
We have a second by Mr. Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. The next board that we have is the TIF Board Taxing Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number One. Mr. Russell Best would like to continue to serve and Mr. Ty Gregory would like to roll off. So we need one new representative for Mr. Gregory Spot, and then if we want to appoint Mr. Mr. Best again.
There, I move that we appoint, reappoint Russell Best to the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number One, and we remove Ty Gregory from same board.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We can make another motion.
Can we adjust that? Need to appoint.
We need to, we need to replace someone for Ty's spot.
Nick Williams. I move to put Nick Williams in.
Oh, I, I moved to put Nick Williams and Ty Gregory.
Let's, uh, we got the one motion in this.
Fix that motion, just let him fix that motion.
Yeah, you wanna add Nick Williams?
Yes, you amend your motion to add Mr. Nick Williams?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, do we have a second?
That's yours.
Well, okay.
Yeah, I would maybe recommend.
You want me to state that?
Start over.
Okay. I recommend that Russell Best be reappointed to the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board Number One, Ty Gregory be removed, and we add Nick Williams as a member.
Mr. Powell, do we have a second?
Okay.
Do the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next board we will move to is the TIF Board Number Two, Mr. Todd Paxton is willing to serve in that capacity again, so if we want to, I'm gonna reappoint Mr. Todd Paxton to the TIF Board Number Two.
I move that we reappoint Todd Paxton for another term for TIF Board Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
With any opposed? With that, the motion carries. The next board is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we need to make two replacements. Mr. Crystal Simpson, um, is no longer eligible, and Devin Sonnenberg is no longer eligible, and then we have Mr. Roger Lindsay, Ryan Fitzgerald, Jacob Tucker, who are willing to serve on this board again.
Mayor, I would move that we reappoint Roger Lindsay, Ryan Fitzgerald, Jacob Tucker to the P and Z, remove Crystal Simpson and Devin Sonnenberg as they are no longer eligible, and replace them with Kobe Gomez and Jeremiah Gavina.
Third.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold on a second, hold on a second, I'm still ready.
Yes, ma'am.
It was the second.
The second was by Ms. Powell. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. The next board will be the zoning board of adjustments. Uh, Mr. Donnie Berry would prefer to roll off of that board. We need a first and a second alternate field. Mr. Jim Mara, Pete Cunningham, Emmanuel Mendez are willing to serve on that board again for another two-year term.
Mayor, I move that we reappoint Jim Mara, Pete Cunningham, and Manuel Mendez Junior for another term, and I move that we remove Donnie Berry and replace him with Barbara Penner, and place Andy Reyes and Richard Shaw for alternate one and alternate two.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Robyn Desmond, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. The next board is the Housing Standards Board. All three individuals are willing to serve again, Miss Lace Johnson, Amber Henson, and Kelly Ellison, so we'll just need a motion to reappoint them if that's what council wishes.
I move that we reappoint Lace Johnson, Amber Henson, and Kelly Ellison to the Housing Standard Commission.
Second.
Second by Ms. Robyn Desmond, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Next board will be the Airport Advisory Board. Mr. Taylor Inscore is up for reappointment and is willing to serve on that board. Uh, so.
I move that we reinstate Taylor Inscore for another term.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robyn Desmond, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. Cemetery Advisory Board, we have three vacancies. We have a vacancy, Brian Bean, and Mr. George Trejo would like to roll off of that board, and Elena Fitzgerald is willing to serve. So we'll need three recommendations for the vacancies, and then to approve Mr. Fitzgerald's reappointment if the council sees fit.
I move that we, uh, the vacancies on the cemetery board, we fill with Ms. Barbara Penner, Mr. Richard Shaw, and Mr. Gary Owens.
I'm sorry.
Gary Owens.
Gary Owens.
And then do we have anyone for, are we gonna reappoint Elena or do that?
Oh, I'm sorry, and, and reappoint Elena Fitzgerald.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. We have done the Main Street Advisory Board. Um, we do not need to do anything to criminal right now. The Levelling Housing Authority is a board that is appointed by the mayor and the mayor only, not by my making, that is just how it happens. Mr. Butch Wade, Shelley Bagen, and Kevin Willis, who is a resident member, would like to serve again on that board, and I move that we will reappoint those three individuals to keep serving on that board. We have handled the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Now I believe that concludes all of our board appointments tonight. There is one other item of business, I believe, from executive session that we were going to take care of. Do we need to do anything, or is this just for us, James?
He's gonna do this.
Okay, sorry.
If you're coming, it's gonna get too difficult. I'm having executive session. I move that we adjust Judge Roland's salary, uh, as discussed for executive session.
We have, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
A second by Mr. Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, the motion carries. I believe that. I believe that.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna need that that motion.
Yes, yes, that's okay. Um.
I move that we adjust Judge Roland's salary. Yeah, I'm sorry, Roland's salary as discussed in executive session.
Second by Mr. Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. Mr. Fisher? Do you have anything? No, no further.
City manager comments real quick.
Go.
Mr.
Please.
Mr. Stewart asked me to read these slows so we could be here till nine, so I'm showing them working on. Mayor and council members, uh, what we handed to you are the mailers that are gonna be going out, uh, to our citizens. We just wanted you to be aware of what was being sent prior to it going out, so that, uh, if anyone asked you any questions. The first one that, uh, has a diagram of kinda how the process works will be going out first to help them understand the, the meter reading process and how the new meters will work. Um, as far as city manager comments, uh, the city has been notified by the Hockley County Appraisal District that Southern Cotton Oil, which is AMD, is appealing their twenty twenty four inventory uh, supplies and spare parts assessment as a cotton seed at their site was removed prior to eight thirty one twenty three. Uh, there is a hearing on this matter, uh, for them to appeal their case, and they have the burden of proof to show that they, uh, did remove said product before, uh, eight thirty one twenty three. I know the date seems odd, but those kinda items have a different date than normal things. So, uh, city staff is working on that. If, um, if it is found in their favor, the city, uh, potentially has eighty three thousand, eighty three thousand dollars uh, in Admiral Arm taxes, that would be, uh, returned to them. And it will have repercussions to the other taxing entities as well.
Return eighty, city would return eighty.
I've asked them to hold eighty three thousand in our property tax payments until this matter is resolved, and if it goes their way, then we haven't seen it. If it goes our way, we'll see that money put into our account. Uh, city received an invitation from Fostering Life Youth Ranch to attend a public hearing in October twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, which I thought was odd getting it this early. But we received this, they're wanting to expand their facilities for additional ten youth. So, um, we've been invited to that hearing. City leadership team is reviewing the employee handbook. That should be to go on March seventeenth. Here's something I want somebody else to think about, if, if you have the time or the inclination. The Texas Municipal League is having a legislative action day on Wednesday, March nineteenth in Austin. Um, they have their mid-year conference on the twentieth and twenty first. I think it would be very beneficial, uh, for the city, uh, if someone from the council or some ones from the council that we can go to Austin, and what I'm trying to put together is a simple one-page, uh, document that explains the property tax, especially how it affects the, the city of Levelland. I think a penny for us, Joe, is about sixty five thousand, somewhere in that area, uh, and probably, you know, the other side to that is that we receive a little over, uh, three million dollars in property taxes. Our police department alone is over three million dollars. So when they're just making idle comments that, you know, we gotta fix property taxes, and cities gotta tighten their belt, uh, it'll have a huge impact upon our community. And I think it's important that we get with our rep and our state senator so that, uh, they can't say, well, y'all did not tell us how it would impact you as a community. I think it'd be important to deliver that. So if you're interested, please let me know, uh, as quick as possible so we can make necessary arrangements. Uh, Park Hill hosted a pre-bid meeting on our wastewater treatment plant. Extremely well attended, had a lot of people very interested, uh, in our plant, so, uh, we're excited about that. The bids are due March sixth. We may give them a little bit of wiggle room just because, uh, the massiveness of this project, but we're still targeting to break ground in May. Um, animal services, uh, thanks to, uh, Chief O'Brien and Captain McDonald, and I just went blank, uh, our. They call, uh, they're doing phenomenal things. We got a new volunteer appreciation application, and the purpose of that is to match the talents and the hours of the volunteers with the opportunities that are out there. So, uh, applaud them for doing that. It's exciting. Um, Levelland listens this Friday, March seventh at seven thirty AM. Uh, we're trying to do it over by, uh, where are we going?
LG Griffin.
LG Griffin Park. Uh, we've had several people on Facebook, says seven thirty in the morning is not good, so we said, okay, tell us a good time. Well, now they're saying after five o'clock.
And I struggle that Friday afternoon is not going to be what they want.
So we're gonna do this one at this month, and then we'll, we'll work on trying to find a different day if it's after five. I don't know. We're, we're listening to folks. We're trying to find a time date that works. I know it won't work for everybody, but we're trying to, to find something that's convenient for everybody, 'cause the purpose of this is to get out in our community, hear what they're hearing, um, connect with our citizens. It's been a great opportunity for Chief O'Brien. People are getting to know her, uh, and, and how amazing she is, but also our other department heads, as when people have a question on parks or whatever, we're able to one-on-one with them, answer their questions or concerns. So we will continue to, uh, work on that. I think it's a great program.
We might go to afternoon and after five.
We may, may try that, and in summer, it may work out well that we, we meet in a park in a pavilion after five, five thirty or so.
Sort of disappointed we didn't have anybody.
I don't know if it was because of the council reps we had there, or if it was, uh,
Yeah.
anything else. I don't know, sir. I, I wasn't there myself, so.
Max wouldn't stand by me, so.
So, um, I don't have, Joe, do we have anything else? Can you share? Right, chiefs? Nothing? We're good?
Right, thank you for that. With that, and no other action, I believe we are adjourned.